Welcome to Cupertino City Regular Meeting, City Council Regular Meeting.
Recording in progress.
Today is Tuesday, May 16th. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:45 PM. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Wei.
Here. Thank you. We are moving to ceremonial items, the presentation from West Valley Community Services on the annual impact report. I understand they are not going to be here in person, they're going to do it via Zoom. Do we see them on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor Wei, I believe Sujita is available on Zoom. Let me just double check. And, yes, and the presentation will also be given from Zoom. Hi, Sujita, and Josh, too. So go for it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and the council member. My name is Sujata Venkatesharaman, and I'm the Executive Director at West Valley Community Services. Today, I'm presenting the impact report that will show the impact that we are making together in West Valley City, including Cupertino. As you know, West Valley Community Services is a safety net organization supporting the low-income families and individuals in Cupertino. Our mission is to unite the community, to fight hunger and homelessness, and our vision is a community where every person has food on the table and the roof over their head. And as a community agency, we serve the West Valley residents, including Cupertino. Our main office is in Cupertino, but we have a mobile operation that we call Park It Market. Our clients are very diverse, multicultural, multilingual, single adults, couples, families, seniors, at-risk youth, domestic abuse survivors, disabled, and people who are adults who are dependent, and also are homeless and unhoused clients. We serve clients who are way below the 200% of federal poverty that is equate to someone and individual making $33,000. Our programs include grocery shopping, food delivery through our mobile pantry, rental assistance, housing referrals, support affordable housing, family support, and homeless supportive services. Along with these programs and services, we also offer wraparound services, which is financial coaching, case management, system navigation, information referral, education and advocacy, and employment coaching. We use other vendors and other partners to provide some of these services. Our approach is crisis intervention first, then we provide short-term intervention and self-sufficiency. The goal of our program is to keep our families in our cities, making sure that they can work and thrive in our cities and live in affordable housing and are able to sustain that. Next slide, please. So what is important, other than just the numbers I'm going to show, is this theory of change that we have developed. The theory of change really focuses on how we can move a client from crisis to stability, and what are some of the services and programs we need to enhance and provide to the client so that this movement, that upward mobility, happens sooner. And this carrier of change is currently being tested by my staff and the agency ourselves, and we are trying to see if we can come up with a hypothesis that says that if we provide these services, such as food services, financial security services, and housing services, that we feel that we are able to move our clients to self-sufficiency faster, and it will also give us the timeline, like how long it takes. So here are the numbers, the impact that we made. The clients who came first time is more than 1,500. People who are accessing services on a regular basis is more than 4,000. More than 1 million meals were provided, and the emergency rental assistance has always been increasing, and that is around more than 2 million. This is our last year number. This is the impact we made. 26% of the clients that we served are from Cupertino and they're Cupertino residents. We had about 262 Cupertino residents participate in our Back to School Gift of Hope Program. All these programs help in asset preservation, income saving, and we had about 63 households that we were able to prevent eviction and utilities shut off. We provided 74 homeless clients, and they were able to access services or get connected to services. And I'm going to skip these slides, these you have it. I want to give Joshua some time to talk, so can you get to the slide on the year-to-date now? So this is our year-to-date representation. Currently, we are serving 169 new individuals, and we have 300 clients participate in special programs, 92 households receive dental assistance, and 86 homeless individuals are currently accessing services at our Cupertino location. The post-COVID impact we are seeing is rental assistance is in high demand, and we are also getting a lot of requests from small business owners, people who are self-employed. Can you move to the next slide, please? And this is just a snapshot of our rental assistance. As you see, over the course of the year, rental assistance has increased, and what this is showing that it has become very important for us to make sure that the clients are not evicted, they are able to live in our cities, and this is primarily for Cupertino. And we have been able to provide assistance nearly close to 150,000 this year alone. Next slide, please. This is our mobile operation and our Park It Market. Now, I would like to invite Joshua, who will talk about the impact WVCs has made for him and the need for more affordable housing. Joshua, take it on.
Thank you, Sujata. My name is Joshua Pringle. I've been a client with West Valley Community Services for nine years now, since 2014. And I am also living under their apartment complex that they run, Vista Village currently. Again, living here for nine years as well. What has done for me in the past and now present, living in a below-market rate, such as Vista Village, has helped me a lot financially. For example, I can, the amount of rent that I'm paying, which is way below what I should be paying, living in the Bay Area, seeing how expensive the rents are here in the Bay Area, I can use that towards, you know, a rainy day, if that comes up in the future. I can save up for a car, which I don't currently have at the moment, save up enough money to eventually maybe get a home in the future, towards that. And as far as West Valley has done for me, they've done so much for me in the past and currently still. My credit was in bad shape. They had a credit coaching program that helped me get me out of the debt that I was in, credit card-wise and everything like that. I've also need help with the rental assistance, actually for the apartment I live in now, I'm living in now, because when I lost my job, I just fell behind for months on months and end, and they were able to help me keep my apartment and prevent eviction, as Sujata just explained. They also have, you just explained, two, the food pantry, which I currently still use to this day, to make meals out of, you know. Lot of great services from West Valley Community Services, and I just want to stress the importance of below-market-rate housing. It's just, it's good, because especially for me, I live in a community where I feel safe. I have no issue here, I've been living here for almost 10 years, not a single issue that I can even think of right now. And for people like me, who've been homeless and are looking for a place to stay, below-market rate can be made in areas like this. Like, for example, there's always kind of like a stigma where if you put like affordable housing in like an area, we'll just say Cupertino, for example, you bring in, you know, I guess you can say the word danger, I guess if I can use that word. That's not really the case. Most people that have come from my background, have been in my shoes in the past, we're all hardworking individuals, we just haven't caught a break yet. And luckily, West Valley was able to give me that break, and I've been on my feet ever since then. So, yeah, I'm very grateful.
Mayor, if you don't, if you don't have questions, the control room would like to take a quick photo of council and the presenters.
Sure, let's take a photo first.
Okay, so if you look straight ahead, they're, they will, they're taking a shot of everyone. Thank you.
I'd like to thank West Valley Community Services Executive Director Sujata Venkatesharaman, and also the testimony of Joshua Pringle. This is for the council to receive the presentation from West Valley Community Services. So, City Attorney Jensen, do we want the council to have a little time to comment? Is that okay?
It's at your discretion, Mayor.
Sure, maybe a couple minutes for each council for comments, if you have any comments. If not, then we gladly accept your annual impact report. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So we're going to move to post-ordons, the orders of the day. Do we have any post-ordons on the floor?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so now we're moving to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council, but not on the agenda for discussion. And this also including the information items that's listed with the agenda. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have three speaker cards, speaker cards for Community Hall, and I see two hands raised on Zoom, so we'll start with Community Hall.
Please proceed, thank you.
Okay, so we have Brooke Ezit, followed by Gary Whipler, followed by Steve Kelly. Anyone wishing to make comments under this item, under this section, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes or speaker card submitted. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you. I'm here to ask the council to do its job. Last week, I attended a special meeting that was nothing more than a kangaroo court. When you were elected, you were elected to do your jobs, you were not elected to play out some mean-girl fantasy from high school. Please do your jobs and focus on what's important. The referral that you made to the DA's office regarding Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Chow have as much substance as the League of Women Voters lawsuit did, and you're going to wind up with egg on your face. Please stop embarrassing the community with this pettiness and this vindictiveness, it's completely out of line. If you can't control yourselves, please exit the dais sooner than later and do us all a favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Gary Whipler, followed by Steve Kelly.
Good afternoon. Dear Mayor Hung Way and City Council members, my name is Gary Whipler. My mother and father, Ann Whipler and Herb Whipler, deceased, he died a year ago, lived at 7585 Prospect Road from October 1972 until March of 2022. My mom and dad were proud to be part of this community for decades. I recall fondly growing up in Cupertino. I played basketball, I ran track, I was a good student at Montavista High School. I graduated 1977. I went on to University of Washington. I excelled, I graduated 1981, came home, found a job at Kaiser Electronics. I went to graduate school at Santa Clara and then worked for 35 years at Apple. The last 24 years as Apple's Vice President and Corporate Treasurer, I retired 18 months ago. In the last few years, when I visited my parents, less and less were the conversations about celebrations and sacrifices they made, and more about the conversation turning into a situation that was manifesting next door. The apparent Cupertino community apathy to address a deteriorating situation. I'm sure that city records will show that my father and others tried to address this situation for years. I eventually persuaded my parents to allow me to move them to senior living and at least distract them from the situation. No one should have to deal with such a situation, and the city of Cupertino should have enforced the municipal code at the time to stop the problem. More recently, I've been more closely dealing with my parents' estate, and I've witnessed up close the stress and angst that Mr. Hutchings has caused my parents and the neighbors and the community. I have observed his volatile behavior, expressions of unpredictable rage, and episodes of F-bombs that clearly impart hostility. I had real concerns for my safety and my neighbors. The mental illness of Mr. Hutchings is truly unfortunate, he should seek help and make better an unlucky hand in life. Anyone wanting to sell or rent a home in this neighborhood must disclose the situation to a possible renter or buyer. This will naturally detract and frighten prospective renters and buyers from buying or renting my parents' home. I intended the proceeds from renting or selling the home to assist for my mother's long-term care. In summary, the house next door is clearly red-tagged and a hazard. The neighbor is regularly present and a nuisance, in violation of the municipal code. The surrounding neighbors are raising their voices and our concerns. We have eight more letters like this one. My father was an older man, and his voice may not have been loud enough.
Thank you, Gary, that is your time. Next, we have Steve Kelly. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. I'm representing four people, I'm not sure if Denise Gant has chimed in online, but Paula and Mindy are here and conceded time, and then Judy Harrison, who lives behind Mr. Hutchings, she asked if I could call her, and then she could authorize her time by me. If that's possible, I'd ask for 10 minutes.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to, you know, doing this, I am okay with giving him the time to talk, if my colleagues are okay with it. Can we just do a straw hat?
Yes, I'm okay.
Not, okay, yes, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, just to begin real quickly, like Gary, I went to Montavista, as did Mr. Hutchings, he was class of '79, my brother's class. I know Mr. Hutchings. It's very sad when somebody is suffering from mental illness. I had to file a police report on him in 2018 for threats of violence. He has destroyed his home, he has created, repeated hazards for his neighbors, he continues to garbage in his fireplace, and that's something, when I was walking the neighborhood, that I smelt. He's been threatening and aggressive, has mannered towards his neighbors. The Santa Clara Police Report that I pulled for responses to the house, there were over 40 calls to the home. His sister said, quote, this is an email from her, "Todd does need mental health treatment. Unfortunately, he refuses all help." She has refused to get him forcibly treated. If it was for the, it is for these reasons that the neighbors are asking for severe immediate action to be taken by Cupertino Code Enforcement and the city attorney. Now that Code Enforcement deadline has passed, which was yesterday, as per Code Enforcement letter dated 10/25/2021, Mr. Hutching is subject to a maximum fine of $1,000 per violation and up to six months in the county jail, per section code 1.12.010. Further, as per the Cupertino City's Attorney Letter of 10/21/2021, the city can proceed with involuntary sale of the property, and all the neighbors would love for that to happen. In summary, Mr. Hutching has multiple repeated violations, he is hostile and delusional, he is clearly unable to fix the issues and is a threat to the neighborhood. Mr. Hutchings is personally in need of mental health treatment and appropriate medication. Filing a criminal complaint against him should result in a negotiated plea with mandatory mental health treatment. Finally, if a doctor or psychologist can complete Form GS 335, then Santa Clara County Adult Protective Service can appoint a conservator to act on his behalf, including sale of the property, putting him in appropriate housing, and helping him get treatment. I wanted to read a couple excerpts from some of the letters, because I know I don't have too much time. So the first one is from Janice Gant and her mother, Arlene Rosenbaum. "I'm writing on behalf of my parents regarding an incident that occurred on January 27, 2023, just after 11:00 PM, in which I was awakened to witness a naked man screaming and yelling while running down the middle of the eastbound lane of Prospect Road in westerly direction. A car fortunately stopped and pulled over after they allowed him to pass. I'm assuming to call 911. When I discuss this issue the following morning with my parents, giving the description of the man, it was apparent it was Mr. Hutchings." She goes on to say, "Mr. Hutching has many code violations. He is a threat to the neighbors. He is unable, unwilling to fix issues and code violations. Mr. Hutching needs mental health treatment. Filing a criminal complaint against him should result in negotiated plea requiring mental health treatment. This would result in Mr. Hutchings in attaining required medical help he most truly needs." Okay, the next letter is from Judy Harrison, who lives behind Mr. Hutchings. "As a close neighbor of Mr. Hutchings, my house is almost behind Todd's house. I'm writing to you to express my deep concerns about Todd's actions and comments. Ever since he's moved into the house, he has yelled loudly, sworn loudly, and is using threatening language. His two dogs were continually barking loudly. On one Saturday, around 10:00 AM, I was vacuuming my back patio. When this was done, Todd yelled, 'That's too loud,' in aggressive manner. Many times, I smell smoke coming from his house, like someone was burning paper in the fireplace. I was fearful that the hot embers floating around might land on someone's roof and start a fire. I don't care what happens to Todd's house, most importantly, I'm requesting some way to prohibit Todd from ever living there again. I've lived in fear for my life for too long while Todd lived in the house." The next letter I'd like to read a couple excerpts from is Kevin Yu, who lives at 7561 Prospect Road. Again, he had similar sentiments. "I'm writing to you on behalf of my parents, who are the owners of the adjacent house at 7561, regarding a troubled individual in our neighborhood who is in need of immediate help. Since moving into the property, Todd has caused nothing but destruction to the surrounding environment, has stolen the peace of mind of everyone in the neighborhood within earshot. My parents, who have enjoyed peaceful neighborhood for the past four years, have expressed to me how they feel unsafe in the home due to the excessive shouting, profanities, screaming, and hostile behavior displayed by Mr. Hutching. It is evident that Mr. Hutching is suffering from a clear and undeniable mental illness. Furthermore, Mr. Hutchings has made illegal structural alterations to the garage, which is in the closest adjacent structure to our property. Should this property fail and damage our property, will the city accept responsibility for not enforcing its order and preventing further destruction? I've observed Mr. Hutching's sister visiting on a few occasions to help repair his house and meet the required standards. I've spoken with them once to gauge their efforts in getting him the help he needs. Unfortunately, it seems as though they were resigned to the fact that he refuses any assistance if his own family is unable to help him. Who can we rely on?" He goes on to say, "Mr. Hutchings should not be faulted for his mental illness, but must be held accountable for the harm he has caused the neighborhood and the emotional distress he's inflicted on those around him. It is evident that he is unable to address these problems independently and requires the city of Cupertino to intervene with a solution. The mandatory mental health treatment plea, in response to a criminal complaint, will help Mr. Hutchings obtain the help he desperately needs. Without such intervention, Mr. Hutching poses a significant risk, and it is not a matter of if, but when he will harm someone in his vicinity. If there is even a chance to prevent such an incident and provide him with necessary help, he needs the city to exert every effort to make it happen." Okay, the last neighbor I'd like to read a little bit from the letter is also behind Mr. Hutchings. Her name is Kathy Yokota, she resides at 7576 Barnhart Place. "This neighbor has had every, this neighbor has had very erratic behavior since he moved in. We've had, we've had been subject to yelling, screaming in the early morning hours. Also, he has walked the neighborhood on Barnhart Place yelling loudly. I'm not quite sure what he is saying or why he's doing that. I once found a plastic bag filled with poop in my backyard. I cannot say that he threw it in. I did not see him, but I suspect it was him. Also, one time I found a paper cup that was thrown into my plant in the planter. A branch was broken off. Again, I cannot say he did it, but I suspect it was him. My side gate is locked, so no one could enter the yard," basically saying he climbed the fence. "He yells and screams at all hours of day, but when I've had company over during the day, I can hear him over the fence saying quite loudly, 'Too loud.' I had company over during the summer, and we were talking in the backyard, normal conversation. I could hear him saying, 'Too loud, keep quiet.'"
Thank you, that is your time. And our final speaker in Community Hall will be Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, council members. I'm very concerned about the budget. The budget does not consider the potentially giving payback to the state by my guess of $40 million. Unrelated to the audit, sales taxes were unexpectedly down in Q4. We won't know how bad or good Q1 is until about May 24th. We all know we have a big problem, 30% decline in overall revenues, yet this is not reflected in the proposals on the budget. I'm worried, and I'm also worried about the AFCR and the Q3 report in your agenda this evening. Please, be nimble. We can do cuts and find revenues now. How quickly can we increase the hotel tax, the TOT? I've talked with Chamber of Commerce and a couple hotels, and they seem good with it. Please reach out to them and get it done, now. What's keeping you? One of the big cost centers of our budget is employment, and it has been increasing. So here's a table here, it is in color, but my color printer ran out of ink. But here, we've got 2015 to 2022 employment in the city. We've got an awful lot of employees, and the budget is only cutting 14 jobs. And I keep on seeing more and more jobs on the city's website. Right now, there are five full-time jobs openings, and there are many, many part-time jobs. So I think that we need to be a little more judicious in the number of staff that we have, and the other thing that I found alarming is why on earth are we continuing to study a new city hall? And it looks like bundled into that is a remodel of this building thrown in. I think that these things should be separated. I think that these things should be separated out, if at all. Let's just remodel the city hall, get it done, protect our employees. And if you look at the surveys that have been coming out, a lot of people are saying, just let's not build the city hall, it's too much money. Please do read my comments on the AFCR. There were a number of errors pointed out in it by two citizens at the Audit Committee. Some of these were fixed, but many remain. And that worries me because when I see something I do understand, if I see there's errors, like mentioning of stores that closed two or three years ago still being revenue drivers in our city, that's a problem. There was also a reference to the City Council appointing the treasurer, which hasn't happened to my knowledge in 50 years. So we need to tighten up these reports. And among the issues that Auditor found is that it could cause unauthorized transactions, and there has been evidence of an unknown user creating an account. That is super worrisome. The proposed budget is downright scary. We're dipping into savings for the foreseeable future. Not okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And that concludes our speakers in Community Hall, so we will move to Zoom. And we have four hands raised from Matthew Tinsley, Jennifer Sharon, Peggy Griffin, and San R. Welcome, Matthew.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Matthew Tinsley, and I am Director of the Strong Start Initiative at the Santa Clara County Office of Education. The COVID pandemic has demonstrated that access to high-quality early care and education programs is essential for working family. Workers need a safe place for their young children in order to keep our economy moving. This is especially true for essential workers, caregivers who can't work from home, and low-income families. Cupertino has lost 20 licensed family childcare providers serving almost 200 families during the pandemic, reducing options for parents and increasing barriers to workforce participation and economic recovery. It's essential that we consider early learning programs to be part of our community's vital infrastructure. There are specific actions that cities can take to support access to quality early learning programs. These could include updating city policies and enforcement to reflect that home-based childcare is a residential use of property, waiving all city fees and charges to register, open, and run a family childcare home, and including family childcare homes in small business programs, supports, and grant opportunities. Please review the flyer I have provided to the City Clerk for additional information. The decisions you make have direct impacts on the lives of children and families. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Matthew. And next we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by San R. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only tonight. I'm very glad to see that all the council members have decided to attend the meeting tonight. I hope they will stay for all the agenda items, even if they don't agree with what is being said or the likely outcome of any vote. I encourage our entire council to work together. There's no way for the council to work on items, except on the dais. The Brown Act doesn't allow for it. So it's very important that all council members stay for all the discussions. Let's all recognize that we all make mistakes. I make mistakes, and we can fix them. This is true for everyone, including council members. I hope that we can move forward with thoughtfulness and respect for staff, the public, our city attorney, and fellow council members after the last meeting. Thank you for considering my concerns.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by San R. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Kirsten, could you please display my slide? Thank you. Good evening, council members. I second everything that Rhoda Frye spoke about the budget. And my concern, the informational item, the ACFR, I believe should not have been placed there. It should have been discussed. This document, it's 131 pages, and there are a lot of errors. It needed to be proofread. This is one example. It talks about the Marina Project, the 2016 Marina Project. It doesn't exist. It was redone. And this is on page eight. So even if you had just read a little bit, you would have read this. Could next slide, please? This, the top part, is page 28 of the ACFR. The bottom is page eight of the proposed budget. Actuals mean final numbers. And yet, the ACFR actuals for 2021 and 2022 don't match the actuals in the proposed budget. Something's wrong, whether it's a process, or proofreading, or something. But if we can't trust our numbers, how do you trust the budget? The other thing I'd like to mention is the senior center. In the ACFR, on page 128 of 131, and I don't have a slide for that, it has membership counts and just general numbers of stuff. And on the senior center annual memberships, it shows 210 members for 2022. Either we have a very serious problem, or this number is wrong. It shows it as being down from 1,470 in the previous year and down from an all-time high of 2,623 in 2014. These numbers matter because we make decisions, we look at trends. And this document should be discussed in public, not just by the audit. The more eyes, the better. So please, when you're considering items for agendas, think about the information and what should be discussed in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and the City Council. I would like to bring your attention to the survey that has been used by city staff to collect input from the community. This survey is highly biased and only presents the community with options that involve increase in taxes, increase in fees for children's programs, and cuts in programs for the community. There are no options that have been placed on the survey to cut staff headcount, to cut administrative headcount, to reduce spending on study projects, to reduce spending on capital improvement projects involving low utilization of these bicycle lanes. And there have been no options put on the table to cut the proposed 80 million city hall. I raise your attention to the survey and ask that this survey is not the first of its kind that has used highly biased methodologies to get one-sided input. I bring to your attention the comments in the surveys because residents have had to use anecdotal comments to give you real input, bypassing the loaded surveys that staff have used to not take input on the real sentiment of the community. Please read the comments in the feedback from the surveys. The comments tell you the sentiment of the public. They would like to see cuts in spending. Over 200,000 layoffs have occurred since just last October alone. As you know, all of those, or vast majority of those, have been tech layoffs, much of that coming from the Bay Area. We cannot have a situation where the community is suffering a massive round of layoffs, and staff is proposing to increase our taxes, increase our fees, cut our programs, and impact our most vulnerable, which is our kids and the programs the city offers them. We cannot have a situation where zero items have been placed that impact staff. This is a trust issue. These surveys don't happen by accident. And I ask you to introspect how these surveys come about. I ask you to put on the city agenda an item to discuss these surveys before they're sent to the community for widespread input. Significant amount of effort goes into gathering this input. And using such biased surveys, does the community a disservice? And does all of you a disservice? I urge you to meet and greet with the community, to get input firsthand from the community. And I ask you to retract this survey and ask for a new methodology to gather input, as this survey, as it stands right now, is highly biased and cannot be used for any decision-making tonight or on the budget going forward. I urge you to cut spending, cut administrative heads, reduce staff. That is painful, but it must be done, and it is no different than what residents face. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to thank all the speakers. And I do believe I would like the city manager to respond to the residents who have the, you know, the mental health issues. I think it's on our radar. So you will work directly with the residents on this issue.
Yes, Mayor Way. So just to clarify, staff has been working with the property owner on Prospect Property. We understand that there has been a lot of concerns coming from the neighborhood, and staff has been working on it. We can provide a separate summary back to council in regard to the status update.
All right, thank you. Do we have other comments from our council members? Councilmember Chow? Just brief comments, please.
So there was a request to put the ACFR on agenda. I'd like to request that be brought for the next meeting so we can discuss as questions. Do I have a second?
Second, more.
So we have a motion and a second. All right.
Thank you. And regarding the budget survey, if we can get information later on the survey creation process and whether it's possible to consider more options since we have still one month left. So if the staff can provide some info later, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, noted.
Just to clarify, this item is not on the agenda for tonight. You will have an opportunity to study the budget tomorrow, Councilmember Chow. We could briefly discuss that.
Oh, so would we be able to talk about the survey questions tomorrow?
It was not part of the presentation. The presentation focuses on the proposed budget, not how we prepared the budget.
I think the question from the community member was, how were the survey questions created, the process? I think the public often wants to understand how a survey is created, so some information will be helpful.
So through the mayor, if it's desired by the council, we can definitely reach back to the community member and let him know how the survey was put together and provide a separate response to council.
That would be fine with me. Thank you. Okay, so now we are moving to consent agenda, Consent Calendar, number two to 12. Do we have any consent item that's being pulled?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chow pulled item number six.
Okay. All right. Do you have any further consent agenda that the council wants to pull? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item number two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, please.
Would you like a public comment first?
Oh, yes. I am so sorry. Thank you. We're going to open up for public comments on items two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Item six will be discussed separately, and you will have an opportunity to make comments, public comments on number six. So any...
Yes, we have two hands raised on Zoom. I see no public comment cards in Community Hall. Peggy Griffin and Jennifer Sharon.
Please, thank you.
Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, City Council and staff. I want to comment on several items. One is accounts payable. It also applies to the treasurer's report that was under informational. The city has choices when it makes its agendas, and we've seen those choices. But one, I think, should be a guiding choice, is to abide by state and municipal codes. And over and over, accounts payables and the treasurer's reports get pushed, so they do not meet the criteria. And again, tonight, we have this example. And tonight, it's a mad dash to make sure they're back into conformance because they're accusing others of municipal code violations when the city itself is doing that. The other thing I want to point out is item number nine, the contract for the ceramic arts. It asks for 328,352 and 20 cents increase. But the projected numbers for the two additional years doesn't add up to that number. And I added 10%, and I added 15% contingencies, and those numbers don't add up. So if possible, I'd like to know how you got the number 328,352 and 20 cents. It really matters, these numbers. And when we're crunching numbers for the budget, numbers have to add up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And next, we have Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members again. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'd like to just make a couple comments about agenda item number 10, the Phase Three of the McClellan-Lanes project. This phase of a long-term project is badly needed updates to the McClellan-Deans intersection. I use this particular intersection by bike several times per week, and in fact, I went through it today on my bike. First, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the staff during the long process of design and bidding to update this intersection. Especially when we are facing an uncertain financial crisis, I'm glad to see the city's money is being spent wisely. Second, I'd like to emphasize how important this intersection is and how needed the changes are. The intersection is offset, which presents its challenges. In addition, both McClellan and Pacifica sides have curves leading to the intersection. At the points where an accident is most likely to occur on these curves, the bike lanes are narrowed and do not have a separation or buffer. Lastly, there's no bike button on the McClellan side to cross Deansa or intersection monitoring for bikes. Bikes must hope that a car comes along and triggers the lights to allow for a bike to cross Deansa. Based on the staff report, bidding will continue for the project to encourage responses from contractors. I support that direction and appreciate the staff time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you again for all the speakers. And now I would like to entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda Two to Thirteen, except number six.
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
So it's being moved and seconded. Any further discussions from the council? Please, Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry, I thought I heard thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two to 12, except six. And is that how you, so moved? Yeah, and second? Okay, all right. Okay, if not, let's vote by light.
Could we ask for questions from the community answered for consent?
We're in the voting process right now. Yeah, let's vote first.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we are going to move to action item number 13. Consider a first reading of Ordinance Number 23-2248, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Chapter 9.18 of the Cupertino Municipal Code regarding storm water pollution prevention and watershed protection. And do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Mayor Way. We have Public Works staff to give a brief presentation on the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Chad Mosley, Interim Director of Public Works. I have with me today Ursula Sarova, the Environmental Programs Manager, and she'll run through a very, very, very brief presentation on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and members of council. I'm Ursula Sarova, Environmental Programs Manager. And we are here tonight presenting an amendment to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 918, which establishes requirements for storm water pollution prevention and watershed protection. I do have my presentation ready to go. Somehow, the magic fairies always make that happen. There we go. Thank you. All right. The City of Cupertino and its residents and property owners are subject to the requirements of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, which is more commonly called the Municipal Regional Permit, or MRP. The Municipal Code, Chapter 918, has been established to ensure compliance with the MRP. However, this chapter currently ref... to ensure compliance with the MRP. However, this chapter currently references standards from the MRP that will be outdated beginning July 1, 2023. The action being taken today is basically a municipal code cleanup effort. The main changes are to reflect adjusted thresholds for building projects required to incorporate stormwater treatment measures and then removing a lot of text that restated information in the permit and instead pointing to the permit itself for reference. As the MRP is a publicly available document and is the main reference for guidance and enforcement of the permit requirements, the proposed amendments to the Municipal Code remove restatements of the MRP requirements and instead point directly to it. By referencing the MRP directly, including future revisions to the permit, the city intends to minimize the need to return for future code revisions to this chapter and effectively streamline ongoing compliance with the MRP requirements. The recommended action is to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 23-2248 and a second reading to enact the ordinance is currently planned for the council meeting on June 6. And that is it.
So thank you for the report. Ursula, thanks. And I'd like to open up for council questions before opening up for public comments. Do we have council questions? If not, I'll open up for public comments. Do you have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have one person on Zoom that would like to provide comments. Peggy Griffin, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I apologize for sending my email late. I read as fast as I can. And thank you, Kirsten, for showing my slides. This one, my first comment, I'm looking at the attachment B for this item and on page 10 of 45, one of the updates to this code is to cross, to delete unused loss returns. And one of the things that was deleted was bio retention areas. But it is used in this code and so I don't think it should be deleted. Next slide, please. My other concern is the impact, the impact, direct impact to residents. And on page 42 of 45, it adds, "Any such bulk items may not be placed in the city right-of-way while awaiting collection." Well, we've been told that the city right-of-way is that medium strip from the curb, the grass area where the trees are. It's also the sidewalk. It's also in neighborhoods, your driveway. And oftentimes, when we put bulk items out for ecology to pick up, they, I've had mixed, sometimes they say, "Put it in the street", sometimes they say, "Put it in your driveway." And some people put it on the grass strip. And so I want to know, does this mean we put the bulk items on the street, the curb? Does it, where do we put them? And whatever your answer is, who is going to get in sync with ecology so that both the city and ecology have the same answer when residents ask? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, that was the only public commenter.
Okay, so do the staff want to get back to the residents later?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. And then inform the council?
Yes, we'll provide a follow-up summary to council regarding the questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Since, let me close the public comment first. So if there's no more public comments hands raised, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to council for a discussion and questions. Councilmember Chow? Since this item is on the agenda, I think it's appropriate to, if the staff has information to answer those questions, they should be answered now. So do we have information that we can answer or it needs to be answered later?
So through the mayor, we can try, given that we are just getting the questions right now, I'm going to let staff take a stab at it.
Sure. We did see the questions and tried to address them before we got here. With respect to the bio retention definition, that is mentioned one other time in another definition. It's not in the body of the code and it's very well-defined in the Municipal Regional Permit. That said, we could add it back in if that's felt to be more clear for people. And then with respect to the bulky item, I did reach out to John Zarelli but couldn't connect with him before I got up here to the table, just to check that alignment question, you know, is what they're saying the same. But we, we do urge, instruct people in the residential guide that we send out to everyone each year, we, the instructions are to put bulky items on private property. And of course, the intention is to keep these items out of walkways and driving areas and whatnot. So that's the intention. And I don't know if Chad wants to add to that.
Hello, I was just going to talk about the definition for bio retention area. You know, there is one reference still in this code section. It talks about bio retention areas such as rain gardens. My recommendation is not to add that definition back into the code section because it is discussed in the Municipal Regional Permit and actually bio retention areas have changed over the years. And the MRP thoroughly defines what a bio retention is, a bio retention area is and how to size those. So again, for that one, I don't recommend adding that back in at this point in time.
So, for the bulk area, so is Ms. Griffin's interpretation, is correct that if we adopt today, would people be cited for code violation if they put some item on the, maybe the park strip?
Through the mayor, if I may, I believe there is a misunderstanding on the interpretation of the proposed code amendment. If possible, we'll have staff follow up with Ms. Griffin's directly to clarify city's position. I believe the intent for today's ordinance amendment is to bring compliance to the, to the national MPD, MPDES permit. So I would not necessarily want to make any refinement that could potentially jeopardize us for not being compliant with the overall permit. However, if there is a need to provide clear definition and interpretation of the ordinance, staff can follow up with Ms. Griffin's separately.
So the section regarding bulk item is a requirement of the, that code, that, to comply with the state.
That, we added the sentence about putting items not in the right-of-way as part of this amendment, just to further clarify.
So that's not part of the state code?
It was a way to just make sure, well.
I don't, I don't believe it's part of the MRP. The cleanup to have bulky items be out of the public right-of-way is for liability purposes. Additionally, a lot of folks tend to overlap into streets, bike lanes, sidewalks. So just to ensure that these bulky items are out of the city right-of-way is important. There's also a practical aspect. If somebody puts something in a park strip, it's not blocking the sidewalk. I'm sure nobody's going to complain and ecology will come pick it up. This is more to address egregious placement of things like in a sidewalk where you're blocking public access. So.
So if that's not the requirement by the state, I think we know that people, if it's in the ordinance, people can file code violation. And then I think this is something that really should be clarified. And I understand the safety issue and maybe there should be a time limit, like from what time to what time, no more than two hours, for example. I don't know.
Through the mayor, if I may, so the intent of today's discussion is on the MP, MPD permit, not the pickup for the big bulky trash item.
Is it possible we remove the reference to the public right-of-way for now so we can clarify?
I would recommend.
First, because that's not required by the state.
I would recommend against the, the residents' proposal. Again, this is a one resident's confusion on the interpretation of the code. Would be more than happy to follow up.
I'm confused too.
Would be more than happy to follow up with you.
And if it's not required by the state?
You can make a motion later, because we understand your, yeah. So do we have any, councilmember Moore?
Real quick, thank you for the presentation. And if you could point us in to the, in the right direction to read about the bio retention devices, just out of curiosity with regards to design. I know years ago, for instance, you would have bermed areas with grass on them in order to hide parking lots. And now we've gone completely the other way. We want to save all that water as much as possible. So if we could see that, and I think it's great for our educational purposes.
Yeah. And in the muted code section, there is a link to the Municipal Regional Permit directly. And if you go to that link and just search bio retention, I think there's like 72 references to it. But the first one actually explains kind of what they are and how to size them.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. If I may, through the mayor, I would like that we move the recommended action if we don't have any further discussion.
I'll be happy to second it.
Okay. So I move that we conduct the first reading of ordinance number 23-2248, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending chapter 918 of the Cupertino Municipal Code regarding stormwater pollution prevention and watershed protection. And do I need to make a sequoia comment or no?
So there's no sequoia comment. I would, I would recommend that you, including your motion that to direct the clerk to, to read the ordinance by title and waive further reading of the ordinance.
And please include the direction per the city attorney. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second by councilmember Foon. Any further discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
Would you like?
Point, point, the clerk should read the ordinance by title before you vote.
Sorry. Go ahead.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-2248, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending chapter 9.18 of the Cupertino Municipal Code regarding stormwater pollution prevention and watershed protection.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So now we are ready to vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we are going to move back to the item number six, which is pulled out of the consent agenda. Let's take a look at it. This is, consider the city manager's third quarter financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2022, 2023, and with recommended actions number one and two. Do we have a staff report for this?
Mayor Way, we do have a staff report. That's part of your packet, but we do not have a staff presentation. I understand the councilmember Chow pulled the item. If we can have the questions from councilmember Chow, staff is here to answer those questions.
Yes, please.
I pulled it at the request of the public. So maybe we can hear the public comment first.
If there are no questions from the council right now, I, go ahead, councilmember Moore.
Okay, let's see. I do have a couple of questions which could be answered offline on this item. And I was wondering about the CIP projects being defunded in attachment E. And I would like to understand also in attachment E, unit 580, the request for additional funds. And it was 580-62-613. And since we're going to be talking about the budget more tomorrow, that, that might be helpful. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to open up for public comment if there's no comments from the, questions from the council. Okay, let's open up the public comment. Do we have a hand raised?
Let's see, yes, we have one hand raised by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Evening, council. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I have two, two questions. One is, thank you for answering my questions about the city hall. I am just baffled why this continues. And I would request that the city council bring back the city hall complete remodel, redevelopment, and in light of this budget issue, reconsider doing the remodel rather than the complete rebuild. Also, I'm concerned about, as we saw in the previous city council meeting, the grabbing of the Art in Lufy fund completely. And the, the fund called the Park in Lufy mitigation fees, it's for park land, actual land. And right now, in the quarterly report, it indicates that they're going to use some of this fee fund for the Memorial Park specific plan. I can see that the next step would be to gobble it all up and do Memorial Park with it all. So you don't get land. So I, I really beg you to not use up all this money in the Lufys, in Lufy, that were intended for specific island. This was land, park land. And land is very precious and very expensive here. And we need to, as our developments grow, our density grows, we are going to need more park. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, that was our only speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to council for discussion. Do we have hands raised from the council for discussion? Councilmember Chow, please.
Yeah. So a question then about Park in Lufy. I remember when reading the general plan, the Park in Lufy, the intention is to, so that we can eventually achieve the goal of five acres per 1,000 by currency act. And then that, in Cupertino, because our deficiency in park land, our goal is even just reaching a lower goal of three acre per 1,000. And even for that, some areas of the city is far from that. And Park in Lufy is meant to achieve that goal. So I, I am concerned. So if we are, are we allowed to use that for park renovation?
So, so we can answer that question offline. I don't believe that, that this is on the agenda this evening.
Isn't that part of the Q3 report?
Through the mayor, I believe the Q3 report is to look at the expenditures and the revenue. As the city attorney Jensen mentioned, that we could definitely provide a definition of the Park in Lufy in the section of the CMC offline to councilmember Chow. But the definition of how the city should use the Park in Lufy is not tonight, is not tonight's agenda.
So my question is in the Q3 or earlier, have we used the Park in Lufy for any park renovation so far?
Great question. Director Alvaro, can you answer that question?
So in any project, I can't name them off the top of my head, but any project that did use this fee would have been called out when we were doing the project and also reported in the, the impact fee report as well. So if you wanted to see any projects that happened. But when we bring those projects as part of CIP, they do include funding sources. So whether that's the capital reserve or the impact fees or park dedication fund or any other funding source grants, that would be included at that time.
I guess my question is, in this year, Q1, Q2, Q3 so far, have we used the Park in Lufy for any park renovation this year?
I believe we're focusing on Q3 today.
Q3, yeah, so.
And I don't believe that we haven't, we have used any Park in Lufy in Q3.
Okay. And in the future, that should be in the impact, annual impact fee report?
That is correct.
Okay. And another question is, just briefly, I think we are still, since we are trying to reduce the cost, so have the city, in the current, the current expenditure, is it lower than the budgeted amount? I believe it is so, right?
I'm not sure if I understand your question, councilmember Chow. Which expenditure, Q3?
Q3, the Q3 expenditure, it's, it's lower than the budgeted, the Q3, the budgeted amount, right?
So you're asking it, whether or not the actual expenditure, total amount is lower than the proposed estimate? Director Alvaro?
Want to try to use this?
I'm gonna try to use this and hopefully not mess it up. Okay, so this is page eight of the report, I think overall page 268 of the packet, and this focuses primarily on the general fund. So this chart shows you where we were, the first line here, sorry, I'm blocking it with my pen, shows you where we were as of third quarter 2022, which we were at 77.9 million. As of third quarter 2023, we are at 67.6, 67.5 million. So we're actually tracking 10 million lower this year than last year. We are, and remember, our budget for the current year is bigger than it was in the last year, so tracking under where we had been previously. And then under this section, it gives you a little bit more detail as to why we think that's occurring. So if you wanted to get into the details, it's included in page 268 into 269. And then after that, you can find discussion on all the other funds in the city as well.
Okay, so, so do we expect the trend to continue for Q4?
Yes, we do expect it to continue, although we didn't come with specific cuts at third quarter. We have asked all the departments to look at reducing their expenditures in this last part of the fiscal year, preparing for what's to come in next fiscal year.
And, and just wondering, are there payments that might come in, in Q4, or do we expect those to still?
Generally, we will be expecting those, so those are for services rendered, so they'll be rendered prior to, right? So that we get the bills after, so there will, there will be some, but not necessarily anything major, except maybe on the CIP front that we might see coming in in the last quarter.
Because I think we have seen that some of the receipts come in maybe one or two or months later, so are there, could there be expenditure that we actually expended at this Q3, but the bills won't come in until Q4 and late?
And, and staff keeps an eye on that, so they know what's coming to their budget and their estimates, doing year-end estimates. It's important for them because they can't go over budget. So they need to watch their budget very closely at year-end, because if they do think they're going to go over budget, that will more than likely lead to us coming to city council asking for additional budget appropriations. So everybody's watching their budget very closely at year-end, even if those invoices are paid after, the staff is still aware of them and they know that they're coming because they know the work has been completed.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much. And finance is my weak point. I think a lot of times I would ask the same question again that I might have read last week, and then the same term I would ask again. So thank you for always being patient with me, and thank you for the prep session last week, yeah.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Chow, councilmember Moore, I think you're next.
Thank you. So, quick question, also, this can be offline. Which of the competitive and non-competitive grants are truly restricted for a purpose as opposed to restricted where council may vote to move the money elsewhere? And I, that can go offline, because I've had that, that question for a while. And I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to have this kind of information before tomorrow, but it would be nice to see the budget carryovers with the budget unit number associated with it, so I could, because I'm trying to figure out what project is, is there for the carryover, and I, I'm unable to do that. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
I had a quick question. After, I don't know what your timelines are for Q4. If there are some invoices that come in after you've prepared your Q4 financial report, will there be like a cleanup at some point after Q4 financial report?
Hold on a second. Sorry, switching microphones, getting myself confused. So for anything related to Q4, there is a cutoff. So departments are sent in late June, year-end closing instructions that say you need to be working with your vendors, and we need all invoices to come in by a specific cutoff date to be included in the prior fiscal year. Once that fiscal year closes, when we come back at first quarter, we give an update of Q4. So that means that the auditors have at least taken a first look at our financials when we're coming back in November to report to you on. So there's a cutoff for Q4, so the departments need to get it in for it to be included, and then the update for Q4 comes to council in November, where we update you on how, not only Q4, but how we ended the entire fiscal year.
Okay, so the straggler invoices will be included at that time?
Correct, we'd be, we'd be closing out everything that came through at that time.
Thank you.
So I think a follow-up question is, if there is an invoice that comes late in the next year, it will be counted toward the next year's budget?
That's correct.
Thank you. Member Fuun? Nope, okay, so we have no more questions, discussions? May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to receive the third quarter financial report for FY 2223.
And adopt?
Adopt, and to adopt the resolution number 23-063, approving budget modification 23-277, decreasing appropriations by 2,758,528, and increasing revenues by 4,902,598.
All right, thank you Vice Mayor Mohan, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by councilmember Fuun. Any further discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we're going back to the agenda, which is council report number 14. I do believe we have submitted written reports, except, councilmember Chow, do you have a written report, or you do want to make a little oral report?
Sorry, it has been a really busy few weeks, and I'll submit my report together with the next meeting.
That, that's no problem, thank you. Now city manager's report.
Thank you Mayor Way, we do have a video prepared for city council. Video team, can you queue up the video?
Thank you very much, city manager Wu. It was a very touching moment, and the Exerson family were there, and it was so hard to lose a son, but the tribute and the memories of our brave veterans and also people who fought for us, for our freedom, for our safety, we are forever grateful. So the dedication of our post office in the name of Matthew Exerson is very important to us, especially in this time that we are in memory of our loved ones. And so, so it was a very, I'd like to really thank Congressman Rokana to make this happen. Thank you, manager Wu, for bringing that up. Okay, with that, we are going to move to, we do have information items for council to read, and it's pretty extensive, and I think we do have a couple of most, future agenda items coming out of it, or not?
Mayor Way, I believe councilmember Chow and councilmember Moore asked item number 21 to be placed on future agenda item, and that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. And council...
If I can, I want to thank the staff for putting all this report on council as the reports. And, I mean, community has complained that, how come all these are information item we cannot discuss? I told them, the staff, I really appreciate the staff even put it on the council agenda so it gets more visibility, because the staff could have posted on the website, and that does not get as much visibility. So I'd like to appreciate the staff for doing this, and it's really extensive report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Chow.
So we are going to move to council and staff comments and future agenda items. We do have one future agenda item proposed by councilmember Chow, and second by councilmember Moore. And if there are no further comments, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at 8:06. Thank you.